Evening. I'd like to call the November 16, 2020, meeting of the University Heights City Council to order. This is Thomas. Please call the roll.
This is Blankfeld.
Here.
This is Berry.
Here.
This is Pardie.
Here.
This is Weiss.
Here.
Mr. Erdl.
Here.
Mr. Rock.
Here.
Mr. Gould.
Here.
I note that then that all were present. All those who are, I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty for all.
First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. We have three sets of minutes before us that we should address each separately. Are there any changes or corrections to the minutes of October 19, 2020? And if not, is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
We have a motion to approve the minutes of October 19, 2020 by Mr. Erdl and a second by... Was that, was that you, Mrs. Berry?
I thought it was Mrs. Weiss.
Mrs. Weiss, Mrs. Weiss, sorry. Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
This is Blankfeld.
Hi.
This is Berry.
Hi.
This is Pardie.
Hi.
This is Weiss.
Hi.
Mr. Erdl.
Hi.
Mr. Rock.
Are these for the October 19th minutes?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, I'll pass.
Mr. Gould.
Hi.
Very good. Minutes are approved. Are there any changes or corrections to the minutes of October 2nd, 2020, regular meeting of, excuse me, November 2nd, 2020? And if not, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make a motion, Mayor.
A motion by Mrs. Blankfeld. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Pardie. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
This is Blankfeld.
Hi.
This is Berry.
Hi.
This is Pardie.
Hi.
This is Weiss. That was unlucky. Mrs. Weiss?
Hi.
Mr. Erdl.
Hi.
Mr. Rock.
Hi.
Mr. Gould.
Hi.
Okay, those motions are, or those minutes are approved. That takes us now to the minutes of the special meeting of November 4, 2020. Are there any changes to these minutes? And if not, is there a, is there a motion to adopt or approve?
I'll move.
Okay, a motion by Mrs. Weiss. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Erdl. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
This is Blankfeld.
Yes.
This is Berry.
Hi.
Mrs. Pardie.
Hi.
This is Weiss.
Hi.
Mr. Erdl.
Yes.
Mr. Rock.
Yes.
Mr. Gould.
Hi.
Okay, those minutes are approved. Now, item five on the agenda, which is the comments from the audience speakers. Five minutes and a total time allowed is 15 minutes per meeting unless otherwise permitted by council ordinance number 9125. Is there anyone here who would care to address the city this evening? I see Mr. Collier is raising his hand. Mr. Collier, if you would state your name and address for the record, you may have up to five minutes.
Actually, I won't be teaching. My father will, but we both live at 4446 Silsby Road, and my father is gonna be speaking here. He is, he's throwing, Collier.
Yes, I'm wondering why no one has contacted the Illuminating Company about power outages. Every time the wind blows, it goes out. And I used to work with the Illuminating Company, and we would install better equipment if an area had at least two outages in a row. How come the city of University Heights can't put pressure on them to install some new and better equipment? Okay? You hear what I said?
Yes, we hear you.
Okay. That's basically what I, all I have to say.
Well, we were in touch with the Illuminating Company about the current outages. We know that there was substantial storm on Sunday with high winds. I don't know that the equipment was such that it should have withstood those winds without any outages. I know there were tens of thousands of outages around the region, not just in University Heights. I know this earlier this morning. It says at 6:00 AM this morning, I believe there were still approximately 50,000 outages in northeastern Ohio in the first energy market. It isn't just University Heights, and, you know, we've had some rather severe storms this year and this season. I don't know anything that we should be asking the utility company to be doing differently at this point. I can certainly bring it up with our contract.
Can I make one more comment before I leave?
Yes, you may.
They use different setups in New Orleans, Houston, and especially in Florida because of the hurricanes. How come they can't put some of that equipment up here?
Oh, this is, I don't know. Maybe, maybe we could. Maybe they could. I don't know what is different about the equipment used in New Orleans and in areas more prone to hurricanes as to what's here. We can look into it.
Thank you very much.
All right, Kate.
You're still in public comment period. Is there anybody else who would care to address the city this evening?
Kate.
All right, I'm just gonna take a quick look around and make sure there's anybody off screen. I'm not seeing, no, it looks like I, looks like everybody here. All right, if there is nothing further, then we will close public comment at this time and move on to reports and communications from the mayor. When I look back on 2020, I will always remember not only the things we gave up, but the ways that we persevered together. I will remember the shared sacrifices we made in hopes of flattening the curve and slowing down the spread of this illness. There were a lot of holiday birthdays, weddings, and other celebrations that had to be limited or delayed outright. For Passover and for Easter, we did not gather as we usually do. We did not celebrate with family in the traditional way. We did not congregate and pray together as we were taught by our parents and our spiritual leaders. We nevertheless did what we could, online, distanced, poignant, bittersweet. One day, these days, we'll stand apart. When this is all over, we will look back on these times with feelings of loss, yes, and also feelings of perseverance, and eventually triumph. We are not there yet, and we are not where we were for the spring holidays either. What we face, we must face clear-eyed and resolute. The power to do what is right is in the hands of every member of the community. Cases continue to rise in Ohio and locally. We broke over 7,000 cases over the weekend. And here in University Heights, members of our own police and fire departments are out sick with COVID-19. Many more are out in quarantine for what may yet come. Still, others are sick and have tested negative but will remain home until they are well, so as not to be susceptible to an exposure leading to COVID-19 or to inadvertently weaken others with more typical flus and colds. Wherever we look, when it is COVID, the cause generally is community spread. Members of households who attend gatherings are unknowingly spreading this disease to their loved ones. Our first responders, indeed, all of our city employees, are essential workers. The public relies on us to be there, no matter how bad it gets. Even in the most stringent of possible shutdowns, we will still need our police, fire, and service departments to keep them safe, to keep all of us safe. We need to control community spread. One way we are doing that, many of you already know, late last week, our city prosecutor, Stephanie Skelies, stated plainly and publicly the city's intention to harden prosecutorial approach for disorderly conduct citations resulting from gatherings of 10 or more. No longer will the city be agreeing to refer, refer these cases to the first offenders program or pleading these cases down. Those charged will plead to the indictment, or they will go to trial. A conviction of a second-degree misdemeanor carries a fine up to $750 and up to 90 days in jail. To be clear, our police are not looking to charge more people or to charge them differently. We are not looking to break up First Amendment-protected gatherings, including but not limited to those for prayer or for peaceful protests. We're not looking to use charges to interfere with otherwise ordinary family gatherings at home. However, we are making this announcement and making it known, for we are seeking to deter holding the kinds of parties and gatherings that tend to get the police called on them. You see, we don't want our police officers to have to report to what may be a super-spreader event. We want to minimize the number of instances our first responders must respond wherever we can. Our men and women in uniform will always come when called. We ask the community to give us fewer reasons for that call. Save it for the emergencies we cannot avoid, not for situations that we create thoughtlessly. People getting sick with COVID is not intentional. What is intentional are the choices we make to be safe. What is intentional are the modifications we undertake to our own conduct for the safety of our community. Which brings me to this ask. Please reconsider your holiday gatherings for 2020, starting with Thanksgiving. Preparations at your home may already be underway for Thanksgiving. If you must celebrate, please heed the new recommendations from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. They may seem a bother, unusual, unnatural even. Please do this anyway for this one year. Do this for the community. Do this for our first responders, whose job it is to report, no matter how bad this may get. The safest way to celebrate Thanksgiving this year is to celebrate with people in your own household, people who are already in your bubble. If you are nevertheless going to host or attend a gathering, please follow the CDC recommendations for that. I will share them online later with these remarks. I will also share the guidance for how to reintroduce a college student returning home. Gina and I will be celebrating together and offering an online link to our extended family. I hope all of you will consider doing the same. Now, I have heard the plain of cries of freedom from those who don't want to follow any rules or recommendations. That is not what freedom is. As Eleanor Roosevelt once said, "Freedom makes a huge requirement on every human being. With freedom comes responsibility." Now, I have long been one to live and let live, to not tell others how they ought to live their lives or how to spend their personal time. I value personal freedom so much that I want us all to be free of this virus once and for all. Freedom is not the right to do as one pleases anytime they want. Freedom provides us the opportunity to do what is right. We must understand the responsibility that comes with freedom, and in freedom, we must continue to fight, sacrifice, and struggle. That is freedom, and that is the way forward, and it is the only way out. Each of us knows the right thing to do. All of us in city government, from the elected officials to the first responders to every last employee at City Hall, heard a calling. That is why we serve, to protect this community, and in 2020, this also means to keep it safe.
At least you can go into politics.
And to keep it healthy. This responsibility extends to us all in the community. May we move forward together responsibly once more, promoting the general welfare secured in the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity. Earlier today, the governor announced that the interim state health director signed a new order asserting further restrictions on mass gatherings. It goes into effect at 12:01 AM. As expressed by the governor at his address last Wednesday, there is to be no socializing or activities in open congregate areas. Guests are to remain seated. Masks are to be worn at all times, except when actively consuming food or beverages, and so on. Notably, this order does not apply to religious observances, First Amendment-protected speech, including petition or referendum circulators, or any activity by media, and, and I bring this last part to council's attention, to governmental meetings which include meetings that are required to be open to the public. If this is the last word on the subject, then come April, come December 1st, 2020, we may again be required to hold our public meetings in person. We will seek additional guidance on this. We will lobby for an extension of the order allowing meetings to be held virtually, such as on this Zoom platform. And if all else fails, we will have to decide if or where to hold our meeting of December 7, 2020, as well as committee meetings presently scheduled for the month of December. Thank you. This concludes my report. First item on the agenda is the motion to confirm mayor's appointment to the city's Fair Housing Commission for a three-year term beginning January 2020. Enclosed in your packet is the resume of Michael Engelhardt of Glendon Road here in University Heights. I believe Mr. Engelhardt is here on the Zoom call, at least he was. I see him. Yes.
Yes, I mean, very good.
I hope everybody's had an opportunity to look at this. We had several excellent candidates apply for the position. Mr. Engelhardt really set himself apart, though, with his, with his experience and dedication, history of dedication to housing issues and fair housing, and I wanted all of you to get a brief opportunity here to meet Mr. Engelhardt, and if you have anything to say to the council, I'd be happy to yield the floor to you, sir.
I appreciate you inviting me and extending the invitation, and I am thankful for the consideration. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Okay, very good. As the council will recall, this is a seat that was presently held by councilperson Justin Gould. We had not re-upped the seat since his election to city council. The Fair Housing Commission had not needed to meet up to this point. There are some fair housing complaints that Mr. Mc advised of the status of later in the meeting. However, there is a possibility that the commission will have to meet if those complaints are not resolved in conciliation. Therefore, it became important that we fill the outstanding vacancy, delighted that we had several qualified applicants apply, and equally delighted that Mr. Engelhardt has agreed to serve and is my appointment to the Fair Housing Commission, subject to council confirmation. If there are any questions or discussion, happy to entertain them at this time. And if not, then a motion.
Mayor, I would move to approve the appointment that you've made of Mr. Engelhardt, and I congratulate him on that appointment.
Thank you, Mr. Gould. I like that you're the one that's making the motion. Can we amend that to be for a three-year term, beginning January 2020?
For a three-year term beginning January 2020. So amended.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Gould. Is there a second?
I'll second, Mayor.
A second by Mrs. Blankfeld. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
This is Blankfeld.
Hi.
This is Berry.
Hi.
This is Pardie.
Hi.
This is Weiss.
Hi.
Mr. Erdl. He's muted. We'll come back to Phil. Mr. Rock.
Hi.
Mr. Gould.
Hi.
Mr. Erdl.
Hi.
Very good. Motion is approved. Congratulations, Mr. Engelhardt. If it's all right with everybody else, I think we could use this opportunity to swear him into the position. And if you would raise your right hand and repeat after me.
I, sorry.
Your name?
I, Michael Engelhardt. Sorry, I think there was a little breakup there.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
The state of Ohio.
Of the state of Ohio.
And the charter.
And the charter.
And ordinances.
And the ordinances.
Of the city of University Heights.
Of the city of University Heights.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
As a member.
As a member.
Of the University Heights Fair Housing Commission.
Of the University Heights Fair Housing Commission.
For so long as I may hold such position.
Or so long as I may hold this position.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I really appreciate it.
Congratulations. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Such a strong resume. We're lucky to have you, I believe.
Well, thank you.
All right, well, Mr. Engelhardt, we're gonna proceed with the rest of the agenda items. You're welcome to stick around. We fully understand if you do not. But thank you for being here tonight.
Yes, thanks again for the invitation.
You're welcome. Next is item B, ordinance 2020-56 authorizing the transfer of funds from the General Fund 100 to the Sewer Maintenance Fund 201, Shade Tree Fund 202, Street Lighting Fund 203, Fire Pension Fund 220, and Sewer Capital Fund 401. This is on emergency. Mr. Kennedy, you have the floor.
Mr. Kennedy is ill this evening, Mayor, and he asked me to fill in on his behalf. This is a request from the finance director to transfer funds out of the general fund to the other funds listed in the ordinance that include the sewer maintenance fund, shade tree fund, street lighting fund, fire pension fund, and the sewer capital fund. These are requests for transfer and not for appropriation. The appropriations have already been made. In the case of the fire pension fund, the amount requested is needed in order for that fund to finish with a positive balance at year end and avoid an audit finding. And with respect to the other funds, the sewer maintenance, shade tree, street lighting, and sewer capital fund, these are the 2% contributions that are required by state law and that are set forth in our assessment ordinances to supplement the assessments that residents pay into those funds. He mentions in his memorandum that there is sufficient appropriation budgeted in the original 2020 general fund budget to support these transfers.
Thank you, Mr. McConville. Are there any questions for Mr. McConville? Is there a motion to approve this ordinance on emergency?
So moved.
Thank you. A motion by Mr. Erdl. Is there a second? Second by Mrs. Weiss. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, we'll take two votes. First is on the suspension of the rules.
This is Blankfeld.
Hi.
This is Berry.
Hi.
This is Pardie.
Hi.
This is Weiss. Mr. Erdl.
Hi.
Mr. Rock.
Hi.
Mr. Gould.
Hi.
Okay, and then on the main motion.
This is Blankfeld.
Hi.
This is Berry.
Hi.
This is Pardie.
Hi.
This is Weiss.
Hi.
Mr. Erdl.
Hi.
Mr. Rock.
Hi.
Mr. Gould.
Hi.
Thank you. Next is item C, ordinance 2020-52, amending codified ordinance section 1422.05 entitled Fees to update the city's contractor registration fees. This is on second reading. I believe we've discussed this previously, and I know we have discussed this previously, and it's also been before the committee. The country, the city's contractor registration fees have not been updated in many years. This is a recommendation that came from our previous building commissioner, Jim McReynolds, and has been examined by the committee, and I believe the Building and Housing Committee did approve and move this forward for a full vote. Don't really have much more to say about it, except that we did, our building staff did prior to, as going to committee, send letters reminding contractors of the obligation to renew their registration for the new year, because we had not yet passed this. It had the old rate on it. If we do pass this, our staff will be sending a follow-up notice advising that the fees are changing for the new year, and if they elect to renew before the fee change, they can take advantage of the existing fee structure. If they wait till the new year, then they will be subject to the increased fee. And if not, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Thank you, Mrs. Blankfeld. We have a motion to approve by Mrs. Blankfeld. Is there a second?
A second.
Very good. I'll take the second by Mr. Rock. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
This is Blankfeld.
Hi.
This is Berry.
Hi.
This is Pardie.
Hi.
This is Weiss.
Hi.
Mr. Erdl.
Hi.
Mr. Rock.
Hi.
Mr. Gould.
Hi.
Motion is approved. Next is ordinance 2020-53, amending codified ordinance, chapter 1424, entitled to update the schedule of building permits. This is on second reading. Similarly, this is product of administration proposal that was worked on by Mr. McReynolds, Griswold, and DeDellis of the Building Department, as well as myself. We compared not only our fees to the fees of other municipalities in the region, but also looked at what the cost of the service rendering actually costs. We learned that over the years, the current fee does not cover the cost of that service, and Bring us in line with Local, other local municipalities as far as what these Charges are. But in addition, goes much further to substantially covering the cost of providing these services to the community. For the Housing Committee, and I know that they've taken As well, and approved it and sent it on to council for a vote. If there's anything further to add or discuss, happy to hear that now. And if not, then a motion to approve would be in order.
I'll make the motion, Mayor.
I'm good. Thank you, Mrs. Blankfeld. We have a motion by Mrs. Blankfeld to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Berry. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mrs. Blankfeld?
Hi.
Mrs. Berry?
Hi.
Mrs. Pardie?
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss?
Hi.
Mr. Erdl?
Hi.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mr. Gould?
Hi.
Okay, motion carries. Next item is item E, ordinance 2020-55, authorizing the mayor to enter into contract for public health services with the Cuyahoga County Board of Health. This is on second reading and emergency. As discussed at the previous meeting, The The city of University Heights, like all municipalities, is required by law to offer certain public health services. As a matter of fact, though, every municipality except one in Cuyahoga County Uses the Cuyahoga County Board of Health under contract to serve as its own city's Board of Health to provide those services. And from time to time, we are Required to Enter into a new contract to continue those services. And further, we are required by law to provide these services, and thus our options are either to Go with the Cuyahoga County Board of Health, or do what the city of Cleveland does, and create and constitute our own Board of Health. It is far more economical for a city of our size to contract with the County Board of Health, and thus We have this matter before us today on second reading and emergency. We do need to sign and submit that to the County Board of Health in the month of December. So Thus, the emergency language in the agenda item. It is up on second reading, however, and thus we won't need to suspend the rules. I think it's only taken me two and a half years to figure that out. So I won't ask to do that this time. I see Luke smiling, sort of. There any? Anything you'd like to add, Luke?
No, you hit the point, Mayor, that it's required by law.
Required by law. Very good. Is there a motion to adopt on emergency?
Also move, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Blankfeld. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I'll take the second for Mrs. Weiss's turn. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mrs. Blankfeld?
Hi.
Mrs. Berry?
Hi.
Mrs. Pardie?
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss?
Hi.
Mr. Erdl?
Hi.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mr. Gould?
Hi.
Very good. Motion carries. Next up is Item F, ordinance 2020-57, authorizing the city to continue to engage Jeremy Iosu, Esquire of Stefanic Iosu and Associates to conduct labor negotiations and related services. This is on emergency. Mr. McConville, would you care to Take the full?
Thank you, Mayor. As council knows, the city continues to engage in labor negotiations with both police and service. The initial ordinance, or the initial authorization for Services for Mr. Iosu was in an amount equal to $35,000. He's currently provided the city with invoices That add up to $45,000, so we don't Have current authorization to pay him for services already rendered. We asked him to estimate the Amount that he thinks will be necessary to complete the negotiations with the idea That we not be in a position of having to come back to council. And so he gave us the figure of $70,000. That's not an additional 70, it's an aggregate of 70 Total. And so that's the proposal that you have before you. I would, however, suggest to you, based on my own experience, that If we end up going to arbitration with either one of those unions, it's possible that Services could exceed $70,000, and so I would just Add the caveat that If, if we go to arbitration, It's possible there would be another ask To continue to pay legal fees.
Thank you, Mr. McConville. Are there any questions? Or discussion?
Yes, Mayor. Mine's more of just a comment that, you know, we budgeted $35,000 for his services, and we're already at 45, but he's asking for an additional 25, which seems like a lot. I mean, I understand Given all that we put on his plate this year with COVID and the budget Crunch in the city, I can understand why he put in extra hours, but why is he forecasting another 25,000? That seems a little high.
Is this because the union changed for the police department and The discussions that were had with the previous union Don't apply?
That's part of it, but also part of it is the extent, the discussion I've had have been extensive. We came in with the position that we wanted Furlough. And we made some fairly Extensive requests on behalf of the city, given what appeared to be a That we did out of prudence, given the uncertainty of the city's financial position During the economic downturn and the COVID-19 pandemic. I mean, we went ahead and cut over 08 million out of our budget.
How long does your creamy chicken?
You are not muted.
My apologies. I was trying to make dinner plans with my ma.
That's wonderful.
Creamy chicken.
Okay, so, so So the negotiations have been I mean, part, I would say that they have been more extensive in part due to the COVID implications of what we were asking for. And We did have some negotiations with OPBA, which Since FOP won the election, those discussions are now moot, and we start over with FOP. But We nevertheless engaged the police department in discussions because, at the time, we were seeking Furloughs from everyone, which meant not waiting until the election was Conducted in order to begin those discussions. We needed, as a matter of Fiscal prudence to begin those discussions regardless, and because we have counsel, We incurred expenses as a result.
Yeah, but to further elaborate on my comment, How is he asking for $25,000 more dollars? I understand he put more effort into the negotiations up to date Than we had budgeted, based off of the parameters that you outlined. But $25,000 more dollars, well, how much more does he really have to do? I mean, From what I understand, some, a lot of the COVID money that we receive can go towards salaries, so the Ask that we're asking of them Bargaining units is not what we were originally Trying to ask for. So why is it so much more?
Well, those, being able to apply money, COVID relief money to salaries was a late development. We've been negotiating with the unions since June.
But I'm asking about future.
Yeah.
He's asking for 25 in the future.
Yeah, I might be able to shed some light on that, although You know, I guess I would qualify these remarks by saying, really, Jeremy would be The most appropriate person to Answer that question, but There are a couple of things that I think are worth considering. One is that I asked him To give me a number that Would be such that he wouldn't, that we wouldn't be coming back to council. So I didn't want him to underestimate the amount. Secondly, you know, in these negotiations, it takes two to tango, so If, if you have a sense that negotiations are going to be difficult, then They're going to end up, you know, costing A lot of money in fees. That's just a practical reality of Labor negotiations. So I think the service is intrinsically expensive On the one hand, and I think that he's trying to put himself in a position where he's Not exceeding the amount of fees on the other.
Okay, so if I'm understanding you correctly, he doesn't want us to underestimate, And so he's asking for 70, But at the end of the day, it's still double than when we were budgeting. I If he doesn't need that, great. I'd rather be more conservative in our budgeting and pump the brakes if he needs more, and so we can get a recap from the administration as to why He needs more. I mean, And maybe in our next executive session, we do hear from him how things are going. I just want to be really cautious why that's going to be double our budget.
That $25,000 is Only till December 31st, too, right?
I think it's, I think he indicated in the document he provided that it was Through July 31, 2021.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I tend to agree with John. I mean, I'd rather Be conservative and come back, and if we needed, vote on something else.
I agree as well.
Well, maybe it makes sense to have him attend the next meeting. Mr. Goldwood, did you?
Yeah, thank you. Dinner plans aside, I do have questions on this agenda item. So, questions for you, and you know, This is an area of law which I am Not familiar with. It's not one that I practice. But looking at a $70,000 amount, you're getting towards, you know, at a mid-sized small firm, The beginning salary of like An associate attorney. And so I'm just wondering, is there a way to seek flat fees for this? Is that something that this area of law offers, knowing the risks of kind of negotiations running long? Because $70,000 in legal fees seems You know, unreasonable At first glance, but I just want to better understand, you know, what we've done to try to, you know, ask For a flat fee, or, you know, a different firm that may have a different fee structure. You know, his fee per hour isn't exorbitant, it looks like only $125 for a partner. But, you know, I just wanted to get a better understanding of the kind of Way that things are done in that realm, and what exploration there has been that may save the city money.
Is that a question for me?
Either one of you?
I don't have expertise in labor negotiations either, so I, you know, certainly we can explore that. And I don't think that Well, let me say this in affirmative, in the affirmative. I think that it's appropriate to have Mr. Iosu and to talk to him directly About the fees and why the initial Estimate, you know, was what it was, and why we are where we are. You know, I think as a practical matter, you know, it's not going to Be in the city's interest to interrupt our legal services on these negotiations. So we're going to have to face that reality, but You know, Those questions are certainly legitimate questions that can be asked.
Can we have Mr. Iosu come to the next council meeting for an executive session to discuss it?
That would be appropriate, yes.
So right now, we're $10,000 behind his original Contract. We budgeted 35, and we need to appropriate 10 more?
Well, you can wait for a second reading if you want to just do it all at once. This was Something that came to my attention out of the Finance Department. Mr. Kennedy got in touch with me and said The fee bills that we've received are in access of what's authorized. I can't pay him for the services rendered. I then got in touch with Mr. Iosu and explained to him That that was the case, and indicated that we needed Something from him, and suggested to him that You know, I guess I was thinking of it in terms of not wanting to waste anyone's time, but I appreciate the Fiscal conservatism and the desire of council to monitor things more closely. So I don't want to be speaking For council on that. I think that your The positions that you're articulating tonight are legitimate, and I have no objection to bringing him in and having him Answer your questions. I think that's appropriate.
Would it be possible to put this on for the next agenda? And if it were convenient for everybody, We could suggest to have our executive session Just prior to the seven o'clock meeting, so that if our questions were answered and everyone was comfortable moving forward with whatever amount, It could be passed at that meeting. I mean, I want to pay someone for the work they've done.
Yes, you can do that if you want to, as long as you publish it on your agenda.
Right, right.
Hold a 6:30 executive session and begin your meeting at 7:00.
I don't want to hold them up, but on the other hand, I do think that, like you said, I mean, these are legitimate questions, and I think we'd like to hear him on this.
And Luke, I'd also like to understand better the communication between the Finance Department And Mr. Iosu's firm, specifically regarding The, you know, Exploration of the, or the eating up of all of the amount that we'd already authorized, And whether or not there were any warnings given, you know, I would expect A firm who's providing legal services And who's been authorized to spend up to a certain amount, to make notifications to their client That, you know, we are approaching the amount which you've authorized us to spend and anticipate X amount being required over that, Not to exceed the amount by $10,000, and then request You know, another $30,000 or $40,000 above that The originally authorized amount. So I just want to better understand that communication. But to my, the second part of my question Was whether or not, or what we've done to investigate flat fees and other firms At the beginning of this process, Mayor, What investigation, if any, did we do to better understand, you know, the rates that firms would provide us for the service?
None. This was the person that we engaged after we fired the previous labor Counsel. His rate was less than the previous labor councils, and is the same as our law directors. It's a competitive rate. And this was a person that we chose based upon His expertise in this area. He does collective bargaining for numerous communities. I interviewed several other mayors with respect to the quality of his work before we engaged him, And found his approach and stance to be agreeable based upon what I had learned from them, and have since Found it to be so in working with him. I would also note that bills that we had this year are not only for The collective bargaining agreements, which are a once every three-year Task generally, but also for grievances that were brought and having to defend. And we had one that was prepared to go to arbitration in February and settled Just a couple of days before it would have gone to arbitration, and thus All the prep work for that arbitration, including paying the panelists who would have heard The arbitration Were all things that the city had to pay for. And we have no control over that. I mean, as far as if somebody takes If somebody takes I, i- if somebody in one of the unions has a position that they want to assert and, and uh wants to take a grievance all the way up to. Arbitration date, you know, we have to defend the city. Um, also another project that we were working on with Mr. Iosu. The handbook, I believe some of the fees are, are also so associated with the city employee handbook. So. So there are a lot of one-time projects that did occur this year that were necessary and, and uh. Uh, you know, and we did not explore a flat fee arrangement. We simply did not. I'm not aware of any labor lawyers who offer flat fee arrangements for this work.
Thanks, Mayor.
So um. I, I think it makes sense, Mayor, to can, to um note that we have considered this on first reading and have it placed on second reading. Uh, on our next agenda and invite Mr. Iosu to um attend the meeting so that he can answer some of council's questions.
Okay, and I'll find out if he's available for an executive session at six-thirty. And if he is not, well, if he is, then we'll schedule that accordingly. And if he is not, then we will schedule something else. Uh, but uh, so we can do. Okay, so uh, as the law director said, we will consider this to have been heard on first reading. And we will anticipate having this on the uh next council's agenda. Hopefully on Zoom, but we'll see. All right, uh, very good. Then next is item G, ordinance twenty-twenty dash fifty-eight, enacting codified ordinance section fourteen twenty-four eleven. And titled uncertified assessment search fee. This is on first reading. Mr. Kennedy was going to speak on this. He is out sick. Uh, Mr. McConville, did you want to speak on this?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is uh an ordinance that um has come out of our building and housing committee. Um, Mr. Kennedy had prepared a memorandum uh for council members indicating that. Um, the building department um is dealing with. Um, the receipt of several requests per week of a search for uncertified special assessments levied against. Property in connection with um residential real estate transactions. Um, that when they get those requests, um, they tend to be of an urgent nature, and so they're putting down what they're doing. So that they can um respond um to the title company. That's typically the party making the request. Um, Mr. Kennedy also noted that he believes the title companies um are charging uh their clients um for this type of. Search um so that ultimately this would be a fee that ends up getting passed through um to the consumer. Um, and he estimated that based on the number of requests that we get annually, the city could see anywhere from. Thirty-five hundred to ten thousand dollars in additional revenue. And um, given uh the, the economic circumstances we find ourselves in that that. Um, you know, could be paying for, for something that we need. So um, given the, the volume. And the value of the service, he's recommending a fifteen dollar per search fee, and that is the ordinance you have before you.
Very good. Uh, thank you, Mr. McConville. Any discussion on this? It is on first reading. If there is nothing, then we will consider this to have been the first reading and uh it was, it was already. The building and housing committee, so we should anticipate seeing it on the next agenda. Okay, uh, next then is item H, resolution twenty-twenty dash sixty-one, authorizing the mayor to seek financial assistance from the Ohio Public Works Commission. OPWC, State Public Works Program, to fund Warrensville Center Road resurfacing paramount to Cedar. Mr. Chuni, would you. Or and discuss this on?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, the next two items are actually related to uh item H and I. H is a resolution authorizing the mayor to apply for the grants. We're applying for a grant for the resurfacing of uh Warrensville Center Road. And then I is uh. The matching funds we're going to have to put into the project. We uh received a letter from the county. They're going to put two hundred fifty thousand dollars into the project. Uh, we have to put in an additional two fifty. And the rest comes from this grant from Ohio Public Works Commission. So uh, one point two million for them is seventy percent. And then the thirty percent we're going to split with the county. So uh, this is a requirement of the grant that uh you pass this resolution and I recommend it.
Hey, very good. Thank you, Mr. Chuni. Uh, any questions for Mr. Chuni? Any comments? Is there a motion to adopt resolution twenty-twenty dash sixty-one?
I'll make a motion, Mayor.
Thank you, Mrs. Blankfeld. Motion by Mrs. Blankfeld. Is there a second? Second by Mrs. Weiss. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mrs. Blankfeld?
Hi.
Mrs. Berry?
Hi.
Mrs. Pardini?
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss?
Hi.
Mr. Earl?
Hi.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mr. Go?
Hi.
Very good. Um. Motion passes. Next is item I, ordinance twenty-twenty dash fifty-nine, appropriating matching funds in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the county road fifty-fifty funding program. For the resurfacing of a portion of Warrensville Center Road on emergency. Mr. Chuni?
As, as I indicated, this is a, a requirement of the grant is that we match it fifty-fifty. So uh, and all the money's going toward the Warrensville Center Road uh resurfacing project. So. County will put in two fifty and then the city has to put in two fifty, and I recommend approval.
Hey, very good. Thank you, Mr. Chuni. Any questions for Mr. Chuni? Question? And if not, is there a motion?
I'll move.
Very good. Uh, motion by Mrs. Weiss on emergency? On emergency. Uh, is there a second?
I'll second, Mayor.
Second by Mrs. Blankfeld. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, will you call the roll first on the suspension of the rules?
Mrs. Blankfeld?
Hi.
Mrs. Berry?
Hi.
Mrs. Pardini?
Hi.
Weiss?
Mr. Earl?
Hi.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mr. Go?
Hi.
Okay, and then on the main motion.
Mrs. Blankfeld?
Hi.
Mrs. Berry?
Hi.
Mrs. Pardini?
Hi.
Weiss? Mr. Earl?
Hi.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mr. Go?
Hi.
Hey, very good. Motion carries. Next is item J, ordinance twenty-twenty dash sixty, amending codified ordinance section twelve eighty point one zero. Entitled rental of one and two family dwelling units in U-one and U-two districts. This is on first reading. The sponsor is Councilwoman Barbara Blankfeld. Councilman Blankfeld, would you like the floor?
Um, I'm going to hand it over to Mr. McConville for the specifics. Um, there have been many. Um, this has been a long and winding road. Um, I spoke with Mr. McConville earlier and I asked that if we could amend this to have. To include a, a whereas clause that would recognize that um esteemed. Uh, colleagues, um past council members who worked so very hard to get this right prior to it coming out to our plates um be recognized. Um, this was something that everybody who had anything to do with it knows. Um, was not done hastily, was done with a, a great deal of uh forethought and. Um, I think we've gotten it to a really good place. Um, it took a long, long time. Um, but I'm going to let Mr. McConville uh put it all in a nutshell um as he is, does so well.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Blankfeld. Mr. McConville?
You're muted.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, first, I, I have drafted the, the whereas clause um that I believe is consistent with. Councilwoman Blankfeld's request, and I'll just read it now. Um, it would be included in your next uh version. Um, what I've drafted reads, whereas council has considered this regulation in committee for over two years. Has conducted vigorous review and debate on its various provisions. And has benefited from the contributions and expertise of various members of council, both past and present.
Perfect.
Having said that, um, I'll just um review a few of the um highlights of the um amended ordinance. First, I think it's worth noting that um the registration requirement will now be an annual requirement. Uh, the fee that's charged on an annual basis is half of the prior fee, which had been charged on a biannual basis. So effectively, there's no change in the fee. And in addition, the um requirement of uh inspection will be a biannual requirement. We have included um modifications to the exceptions to. Um, the obligation to obtain a rental permit so that the exceptions include um domestic partners. And include um what we define as a functional family equivalent. Functional family equivalent is a non-traditional family structure that meets um the, a, a test that we've created. Um, in defining the term functional family equivalent. Um, and we have utilized a um definition of domestic partnership that's drawn from. Um, the version of that defined term that uh is used. In the city of Cleveland um and their um policies and ordinances. Um, we have beefed up our notice provisions. Um. Well, let, let me say that differently. We've, we've beefed up our requirements in our um rental permit application so that we can more easily obtain notice. Um, of landlords and instances when we may need to do so. We've done that by requiring the landlords to provide us with um the name and contact information for a local authorized representative. Um, and we've also uh require, we, we also are requiring landlords now to um provide us with information. Um, about uh their corporate entity if, if ownership of the home. Um, is held in, in a corporate entity. And again, that is for purposes of making it easier for us to obtain. Service um in, in the event that we, we need to. Uh, we've also included um language that. Uh, makes it clear to any landlord or tenant that they have a right. Um, under the Fourth Amendment to refuse inspection and creates a process as to what happens. If, if there's a refusal of inspection, uh specifically the city will uh be in the position of electing whether to obtain an administrative warrant. Um, and if, if an administrative warrant is obtained, then we can conduct our inspection in the home. Um, if we elect not to obtain an administrative warrant, or alternatively. If um a court determines that we're not entitled to administrative warrant, then we will have the obligation of issuing the rental registration. Uh, to the landlord. Um, we've also um sort of reformatted our um fee structure to make it easier to read. We, we thought it was confusing. Um, in the last version of the ordinance. And we have um eliminated our enforcement provisions in response to a city of Bedford. Case, that was a case in which the ACLU um sued the city of Bedford. Uh, for some punitive provisions in their rental registration ordinance. Um, that resulted in a tenant who was a complainant to the police department, ending up um being evicted. Was fairly egregious um conduct, but the, the long and short of it is that. Um, the kinds of punitive provisions that we had in our ordinance are very similar uh to the ones in Bedford's ordinance. And so. Um, council, I think, is wanting to um revisit those enforcement provisions to make sure that. Um, they pass constitutional muster. Uh, my editorial comment on that is I would urge. Um, the building and housing committee to meet sooner rather than later. Um, to again, put this ordinance into committee and to finalize the enforcement aspects of it. Um, with that, I would turn the floor back over, Mayor, either to you or to Councilwoman Blankfeld and, and/or field any questions from council.
Hey, very good. Mr. McConville, Mrs. Blankfeld, looked like you had something you wanted to add.
I do, thank you. Um, I, I did want to include um, thanks to Mr. Grovan Myers. Who is now with another community, um, but he put in an awful lot of hard work on this and certainly um. A great deal of thanks to all the community members who came to public hearings multiple times to, you know, share their thoughts and their ideas and their questions and concerns. I think that this is something that protects our neighbors who rent. Um, it certainly. Facilitates things for the administration. Um, and uh. I, I think we're moving in a really good direction. Like Mr. McConville has said, we have that last piece regarding enforcement to uh. To discuss a little bit further, but overall, um, did anybody else have any thoughts? I know many of you did attend our building and housing committee meetings. Everybody's happy.
All right.
Thank you.
Very good. All right, well, then if there is nothing further, uh, we will consider this to have been heard on first reading and uh it having. Already been through extensive committee review, uh, we'll be back on the next regular council agenda. Thank you, Mrs. Blankfeld. Thank you, Mr.
Thank you, Mr. McConville.
All right. Uh, next up then is a motion to approve quote from Starfish in the amount of thirteen thousand two hundred and seventy-six dollars, sixty-six cents for firewalls and access points. Uh, Mr. Kennedy was going to speak on this, but he's not here. Um, Mr. Brother, uh. Chief Rogers, I know you sent me an email regarding Lieutenant Lombardo's initial. Findings and discussion. Before I get, recognize you, I want to provide a little background. Uh, we recently had an audit. That we um, an audit issue with regard to our firewall and in connection with the uh use of our. The, the, that implicates the use of credit cards. As, as many of you are aware, we are accepting credit cards now uh for city services. In a way that we did not previously and um. Uh, there is an issue with regard to uh our, our current firewall and our ability to continue to accept. Uh, credit card payment and we need to secure our firewall if we want to continue to do that. I asked Starfish to. Uh, Starfish approached me after Mr. Kennedy approached them about this issue. They know that we are undergoing an, an IT. Review. We have uh an RFP that's currently out. Where we will be uh seeking bids for our next IT provider, which Starfish could be, but is not necessarily going to be. So they hesitated about whether they should proceed with preparing this quote, but I asked them to please go ahead, even though. Um, even though in a more perfect world, would probably want to settle the IT issue first, but what we don't want to do is not, this is stop accepting credit cards in the interim. For several weeks or months while we sort that out. Uh, so. I asked them to go ahead and prepare this. At the same time, I know Chief Rogers uh. Asked Lieutenant Lombardo, he would also take a look at our firewall, and there were some things he was able to. Uh, discern and suggest, but doesn't have a complete answer for, I believe. So. I don't know, Chief, if you would like to weigh in at this point on that or suffice it to state. Chief, please, go ahead.
Yeah, Mayor, at this time, there's not really much to uh offer that would confirm a position one way or another. Um, depending on if a updated subscription service to the forty-nine firewalls would. Uh, resolve all of the, the issues that are occurring with the credit card uh machines. Or if there actually needs to be new hardware purchased. So at this time, um, Lieutenant Lombardo. So at this time, Lieutenant Lombardo is not able to make a definitive recommendation or determination without a little more time or information on the hardware that's currently in place.
Okay. Well, I asked that this be placed on the agenda even while Lieutenant Lombardo looked at it. Because even though we don't have an answer necessarily from Lieutenant Lombardo, we may come to one. But because we've already engaged Starfish and already have money allocated for the work they're doing, I did not want to piecemeal out this project. And even though the $13,276.66 is under my spending authority as mayor, in the aggregate, it would be, we have spent more with Starfish than my spending authority. And thus, I would not, I would want to have this addressed specifically by council. My request at this juncture would be this. While we continue to evaluate whether or not we, well, while we continue to evaluate what we need to do with the firewall, because we can't not do anything, we must do something. I would ask that the council approve the quote so that if, after working with Lieutenant Lombardo, we decide that that really is the best way to go, I then have the authority to go ahead and give authorization to Starfish to proceed. I would rather not stop accepting credit cards at the city for special pickups and other things, simply because we are unable to then proceed with resolving the firewall. What they've done here is what they believe is the best practices for the long term for what to do with our firewall. Firewall as it exists was installed by a previous vendor and is not the product that our current IT would typically support. So I would ask for a motion to approve the quote in the amount of $13,276.66 for firewalls and access points, understanding that we will evaluate this further in-house as to whether we will do that or something else that is either less expensive than that, either with Starfish or internally with Lieutenant Lombardo.
Mayor, was this just recently found? Because in the past, we've had credit cards for many years with the pool.
Yeah. Mr. Kennedy could better answer that. Unfortunately, he's not here. But yes, I understand this was a recent issue that came up. Yes.
So what you're asking us to do is vote on something that possibly could be much less based on the lieutenant's discussions with Starfish? In the meantime, until we have our IT consultant actually hired?
What I'm asking is that council would approve the $13,276.66 in the event that we proceed exactly with what Starfish is recommending. If we decide to go a different direction, we would have the ability to do that if it's in-house, I think. Because we wouldn't go a different direction if it costs more. We would only go a different direction if it costs substantially less. The same time, you know, I'm not one to want to deviate from the advice of the vendor that we're currently engaged with, who has worked very well for the city up to this point. But it's an acknowledgement, and they themselves were quick to acknowledge too, that, you know, it remains a question as to whether they will be our long-term IT provider until after the RFP process is completed. So they did express some reticence about providing the quote because they didn't want to seem as if they were just trying to, I guess, you know, work the account in that way.
And the lieutenant has not completed his own personal assessment yet, correct?
That is correct.
So can we wait on this? Can we table it?
I would rather not table it because I don't know when we're going to meet again. And we may want to get this resolved before our next meeting. It is a security, cybersecurity, you know, especially now, you know. I don't want people hacking at our firewall.
Mayor, I also like to add, if okay, it's okay, I'll, Lieutenant Lombardo is waiting for a call back from a 40 net subscription service where it could be as early as tomorrow. He would be able to determine if an updated subscription will resolve the problems that the finance director has recently identified and uncovered. So it could be something that occurs very soon where we can say, we're just going to update a subscription, which can be anywhere from $1,000 to $15,000 to $2,000 a year that will resolve all the problems. Or that information come in tomorrow indicating that the updated subscription for the service plan will not fix those problems at all. And there is still some components of that quote that regardless of the firewall hardware that's used going forward for the short term or long term, there is still some functions in that quote that would have to be done regardless of firewall, like the different drops that would need to be done.
Okay.
Those points are a little short.
I'm sorry.
Do you know how many access points were short? I mean, I happen to know about firewalls and access points. So those are, I mean, it's unusual that we don't have enough access points right now anyways. Like, how did that all of a sudden just pop up that, that we don't have that? Like, who figured that out? I just, I just feel that we need somebody that we can ask questions to before we vote on it. That's all. Not that I'm saying that it's, we shouldn't, you know, we don't need it. But I, you know, I think we just need some clarification.
Okay. Well, unfortunately, we didn't anticipate Mr. Kennedy being, you know, ill this evening. I mean, I say that, but I also say that knowing that Mr. Kennedy's been out sick for over a week. But we believe he would be. So. All right. Yeah. I'm not able to provide those answers to you this evening.
Are the issues that identified, Mayor, the type of thing that could be brought to the technology committee to see if there were creative solutions that they may have?
I don't know. I, I don't know that, I don't believe that, I believe that this is the sort of thing that normally should just be handled by our IT provider once we select one. I don't know that normally we would go to the tech advisory committee for something like this. I also don't know how long we should just let this sit here like this. It's a security issue. That I do know.
Well, before, to identify and better define what the security issue is and the best way to combat the security issue, I would suggest that if there is an inability to safely provide the service of online credit cards, that that be withdrawn for a couple of weeks while we figure it out.
Okay. I look forward to letting the community know that.
Well, we can also, if the lieutenant finds out tomorrow, all we have to do is update our subscription. You know, in the meantime, until we hire our, our IT team, we can have a special meeting if that's not the case. If it's just a matter of getting a subscription, that could be done without us. But if it can't be, then maybe we should have a special meeting. I'm okay with that. I just feel that, um, I know it's needed. I just, we need somebody to just answer a couple of questions. That's all.
All right. Very good. Well, then we'll see what Lieutenant Lombardo finds. And if we need to call a special meeting, we'll call a special meeting. I suppose then we should have a motion to table this agenda item.
I was just going to suggest that, Mayor.
Very good. Is there a motion to table?
So moved.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Blankfeld. Is there a second? I'm sorry, that was Mrs. Weiss, wasn't it?
Yes, I'll second though, Mayor.
Very good. So a motion by Mrs. Weiss, second by Mrs. Blankfeld. Any discussion? All right, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mrs. Blankfeld?
Hi.
Mrs. Berry?
Hi.
Mrs. Pardy?
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss?
Hi.
Mr. Erdel? Did we lose Mr. Erdel?
I think we did.
Oh, there he is.
No, there he is.
Hi.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mr. Gould?
Hi.
Very good. Item is tabled. Next is item L, motion to hold an executive session immediately following this regular meeting for the purpose of discussing personnel, legal, and/or real estate matters. At this time, we have no matters for executive session this evening. No other member has anything, then we will proceed accordingly to the director's reports. Mr. Kennedy is not here. Does any, Mr. McConville, did Dennis give you anything that he could report on? Or that you could report on his behalf?
He did not. He notified me shortly before the meeting that he was under the weather, feeling ill. And I did not have a report from him.
He did text me. I didn't see the text until after you pointed out that he wasn't here and wasn't available. And he told me the same thing. All right. I can say that Mr. Kennedy has been out since a week ago last Thursday. And that we have, that there are certain work that, that, certain work is nevertheless, you know, being done the day to day is still being handled by the staff here. And he has been working remotely while ill. However, we have not yet, we are behind where we hoped we would be with regard to preparing next year's budget because he's been out. So I want to at least report that so that council's aware and especially with the finance committee meeting that we presently have scheduled, I believe, for the second. So I'm not sure where we're going to stand with regard to the December 2nd meeting with Mr. Kennedy out ill and still ill. But we will, of course, do what we can. That said, I know that Mr. Kennedy's been good about getting reports out to council as they're generated and, you know, and to me simultaneously. And looking forward to his complete recovery and, and continued service. So with that, I've got nothing really further to add with regard to finance at this time. Does anybody have any questions? All right. Very good. Thanks. Director of law, Luke McConville.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a brief update on the fair housing complaints that we received. As I mentioned previously, we've received four complaints filed by the Fair Housing Center. We've heard, we've received responses from three of the respondents. And the Fair Housing Center has asked for additional time to reply to the responses. We're still waiting to hear from one of the respondents. I think it'll be before December until any decisions are made with respect to whether the complaints will move forward or not. We're in the process of gathering all of the case law and reviewing the arguments that have been set forth. And we'll do that thoroughly before any decisions are made. But it's likely that we'll have at least a couple conciliations occurring. And then depending on what happens in conciliation, we may convene the Fair Housing Board for evidentiary hearings. That concludes my report.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. McConville. Any questions for Mr. McConville? All right. Seeing none, we will go on to public safety. We'll start with police. Chief Rogers.
Thank you, Mayor. Council tonight, I'd like to report on one item. It's more of an update of some information that you were previously provided regarding vehicle thefts in our city. Since September throughout the region, there has been a significant amount of vehicle theft that has been occurring in residential neighborhoods where vehicles are taken from residential driveways. In our city since mid-September, we've had 13 vehicles that have been stolen. At this time, 10 vehicles have been recovered. Five individuals have been charged and investigations are ongoing that will likely lead to additional charges. But with that being said, it's, you know, the department is really trying to stress in our communication with the public and the community that it is imperative that, that vehicles are locked and keys are not left in vehicles. Valuables are not left anywhere in vehicles or anywhere that can be seen. And recently requesting our investigative bureau to run some statistics on our specific incidents of our 13 vehicles that have been stolen since mid-September. All of those vehicles have been left unlocked with the keys in them. Now, on our end, we've been increasing our patrols, utilizing uniform and plainclothes resources in the field to try to deter and intercept those that are in the field committing these crimes. But it is difficult for us to do anything and be successful alone as an agency. We need to collaborate, work with the community, express that, you know, residents, when they see something or hear something suspicious, to call the police department right away. Further enhance the communication and the awareness of this. Our police department and Office of Community Policing is collaborating with the Office of the Mayor and Communications and Civic Engagement to put out a mail or to all the residents very soon where there will be a message from, from all the offices to reach out to the public for awareness purposes and requests to work with them and try to, try to prevent these occurrences from happening in our city. More information will be coming out. Thank you. That completes my report.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Chief. Does anybody have any questions for Chief Rogers? All right. Seeing none, we will move to public safety, fire. Chief Perko.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Two items to report tonight. One is an update or follow-up to some of the windstorm damage from yesterday evening. And First Energy received a notification from the county this afternoon that there was approximately 18,000 residents or customers in the county that were without power. First Energy was working to restore that sometime early afternoon on Wednesday this week. A little bit about how First Energy goes about that. They typically go out and secure primarily the hazards first. So as residents report down wires or the fire department to them, anything that's a hazard to safety or a structure catching on fire or blocking a roadway, they go out and address those matters first, often not making any repairs. Those hazard responders are out just to clear the way and mitigate the immediate safety issue. As they sent out their workers to start doing repairs, they started addressing facilities that are critical in nature first and making repairs that will provide a power restoration to the largest group of residents first. And then they trickle their way into all the little pocketed areas. So it does take some considerable amount of time. But I know they had over 100 of their employees out in our region just for this last storm. So I know they're working hard to get it restored. So I would reiterate what I reported on at the last meeting that if anyone has any issues, make sure that they notify the fire department so that we can make sure we cordon off any areas and make sure people safe and aren't walking over any down wires or picking them up, assuming they are not energized. Second item to report, earlier this year, the Kylhoga County Fire Chiefs Association applied for a federal grant for PPE related to COVID. They were awarded this grant from FEMA. So probably at the next council meeting, you'll see that for your approval. I believe it's 30 some communities in the county will be awarded this through to Kylhoga County Fire Chiefs. And I will bring that to you at the next meeting for approval. That's all I have to report.
Okay. Thank you, Chief Perko. Any questions for Chief Perko? Heard me to look up whether they, anybody ever loses power in a hurricane. Seems like that happens. So anyway, all right. Thank you, Chief. Seems like that happens, so anyway. All right, thank you, Chief. Next up is service. Mr. Pecorni.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. Only have two items to report this evening. One is our curbside loose leaf collection program is continuing. We've completed our second round around the city. Each round has taken about two weeks. The leaves came down on time this year, so it's a little slower than usual for the first couple of rounds. But we anticipate in the next two weeks completing the third round, which should be the bulk of it. Second item is our tree planting contractor is gearing up to get started next week on planting trees. We have approximately a hundred and twenty trees to plant. And that should take about three weeks also. And that concludes my report.
Yeah, very good. Thank you, Mr. Pecorni. Any questions for Mr. Pecorni? Oh, Mr. Rocket.
Yes, Mayor, what do we do with all the pumpkins?
Pumpkins generally go in the trash. They can clog the tube on the vacuum if people put them out in the leaf pile. So a lot of times you'll see the leaf crew go past them, leaving them there. We collect it with the lawn leaf bags generally because that crew gets out to pick up lawn leaf bags. And they'll pick up the pumpkins at that time. If not, then they get picked up with the trash on trash.
Okay, so you can put it in a trash bag or the yard waste bag?
It really should just go in your trash can.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Rock. Thank you, Mr. Pecorni. Okay, City Engineer, Mr. Chuni.
I'll report this evening, Mayor.
Okay, very good. Communications and civic engagement. Mr. Cook.
Good evening. We're going to do something different. We're going to shift gears a little bit with the civic awards this year. Obviously, we can't meet as a community for a big dinner this year, so what we're going to do is we're going to roll out the names of people who are receiving awards this year. We're going to do it on Thanksgiving. You know, this has been such a bad year for just about everyone. But like Mr. Rogers says, you know, when things are bad, look for the helpers, look for the people who are trying to do good, and we're thankful for those folks, and we're going to try to honor them on Thanksgiving. So when you're waiting for the turkey to come out of the oven, or you're sitting on the couch afterwards watching football, you know, scroll on our our social media feeds on Facebook, on Twitter, on Instagram, and see which of your neighbors will be celebrated for the the good work that they've done this year. Secondly, speaking of Thanksgiving, every year, our friends at eight-eight-eight Ohio Comp, they've been donating frozen turkeys to the city, and then we return distribute them to relatives, residents. With with the COVID situation right now, it's probably not a good idea to have people line up closely outside City Hall for turkeys. So what they've done instead, instead of donating turkeys, they've donated gift cards to Hyman's. So we're going to be distributing those on Friday. We're, Mayor and I are still going to work out the details. We'll probably have an announcement on that tomorrow. I'll let all of you know, so you could also help us get out the words to to your constituents. And two more very quick things. I'm working with Chief Rogers, like you said, on the the mail piece to residents about the the car situation, so hopefully a little education can go a long way to stop this this car theft situation in our city. And finally, set the stage for Susan Drucker. I'm going to be working closely with her on the promotion to promote shopping in University Heights around Thanksgiving for the end of the year. That's it.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Cook. Any questions for Mr. Cook? All right. Very good. Economic Development, Mrs. Drucker.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. As Mike mentioned, we are going to be doing a six-week shop local campaign. This is in conjunction with the other cities in the Chamber of Commerce, so all of the promotions will go out to all six cities that will all be doing together. But instead of focusing on that Small Business Saturday, which is one day, we wanted to draw it out longer and make sure we're inclusive of all the small businesses and encouraging the shop for people to shop locally because of, especially because of how our businesses have been struggling. And then also, Mike and I will be working on, working with restaurants about their takeout, since that's going to be more encouraged again, not dining in restaurants, but some type of takeout promotion so that we can make sure our restaurants throughout University Heights are promoted and well advertised as to what they're offering. Secondly, I just want Council to make sure that you're aware that the property at twenty-two-hundred Green Road, which is owned by John Carroll, it used to formerly be the Temple Emmanuel, that is up for sale by John Carroll. Right now, that is currently zoned U4, that is a multifamily, which is multifamily residence zone. So just so you're aware that that property, that's right next to Hyman's. Just to give you a frame of reference, but that was put up, put on the market approximately two weeks ago. And and then lastly, Councilman Rock, I'd like to possibly have an economic development committee to follow up on that RFP for the comprehensive zoning code update, if if I'm going to include that in my budget for next year. And I would like to have that ready to go through our committee just so that I'm prepared for whenever Council is ready, if if they were going to approve that. And those are my comments tonight.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mrs. Drucker. Any questions for Mrs. Drucker? Mrs. Blankfeld.
So Susan, run that by me again. So the building that was Temple Emmanuel that then became part of the JCU campus. It's zoned as what? Multifamily?
U4, which is multifamily residence. Now, again, that, I don't know when they took possession of that property, if zoning changed in the interim, if it was a grandfather use or what have you, but it is U4 multifamily residence.
It seems really odd.
So so there is a a broker who's marketing the property, which is Allegro Realty Advisors. And I know they've been getting a few calls on that once that was put on the market, so.
I'd seen, I saw when it went on the market. Yeah, huh. That's such an odd zoning code for that property.
We have a lot of odd zoning.
Yes, we found that out.
Comprehensive zoning update.
We've more than a few. Thank you.
Indeed, thank you, and thank you.
I thought I just heard you.
Anything further for Mrs. Drucker?
Do we know what's going to happen with that old KFC?
I do get calls on that. It's, now, they had, the owners had received permits to do some exterior work on the parking lot. Not on the building, but just the parking lot area in the in the green space. They received the permits. They, I I believe they never went in to pick up the permits. The permits were approved, but they never, I don't think, as of last week, I know they had not even picked up the permits. So no work on that has been done. There has been, I I still continue to receive calls when people are interested, they'll, they'll talk about either, it's both about leasing or buying, but there's just no deals are coming to fruition with the owner of the property.
Because there was a rent.
I'm sorry?
There was a for rent sign up for a while, but now it's down. Now, there's no for rent sign there.
Yeah, and I I don't know if that was blown away in the wind or what have you, but they are trying to actively lease it and or sell it. But anytime somebody has shown, expressed an interest, it, as I said, it just seems, once they speak with the owners, it just kind of dies out and nothing has been brought back to me as as far as a an actual deal. But there is interest in the site, and there has been generated interest in the Midas site as well.
Oh, good.
Now, is Jack's closing?
There were was talk about, right now, I would tell you, as I'm going through different businesses, I I'll have a better idea after the first of the year. Just because businesses obviously are trying to make it work, but it's just been an incredibly challenging time, so I unless I get a for sure answer from someone, I don't want to speculate, but I will have a better idea with an inventory of who's going to make it through this pandemic, and we already have some businesses that have already closed. But I won't have an accurate number, especially now, we don't know what to expect with the new announcements that are going to be coming. I understand there's supposed to be some now announcement on Thursday from the governor, so it it all depends if if there's going to be lockdowns or what have you. Obviously, that will have an impact on who can survive this pandemic or not. But it has been very difficult on several of our businesses. They're they're struggling. It's it's tough right now.
You know, you you figure with the KFC property, if it was improvements to the parking lot with paving and whatever, I mean, that window is coming to a close. You know, the the ability, I know my husband's business, you know, they have paving work done and whatever each year, and and there is, there is a window where the asphalt, getting it from the plant to the site, it cools too quickly and and you can't do it. So, you know, there's a certain point in the year. I mean, they've been lucky so far. We've had lots of warm weather, but, you know, that could be part of it. They may have to wait till spring.
Right, yeah, I I don't see any of that happening this year.
Yeah, just to elaborate on Jack's, I understand that due to COVID, they 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 did make an announcement, and I saw it was also in the comments, but they did make an announcement, I think, on Facebook, that they're going to be closed for two weeks. That's their anticipated time that they're holding right now. I think Facebook is where I saw that, but I did see it was also somebody put it in the chat, and I was going to go ahead and mention that, but but.
But that's just a temporary. I thought you're, Councilwoman Berry, I thought you were asking if they are closing permanently, so that's why I didn't want to draw that conclusion. I know there, and there are a couple of places that are going to just shut down for a few weeks again, just to.
Right, like in Cleveland Heights, both Knight Town and TAB, the TABCO have both announced a an extended closure due to COVID. I I imagine we'll be seeing more of that. I mean, you know, in the area, if not, I realize neither of those are University Heights businesses, but they are businesses in the area, and most of us have probably been there at one point or another. They are barometers of what's going on. All right, anything further for Mrs. Drucker? Okay, then we will turn to the reports from standing committees. We'll start with Building and Housing. Mrs. Blankfeld.
Nothing new on the plate this evening, Mayor. Thank you very much. No report.
Very good, thank you. Community Outreach, Mrs. Purdy.
Thank you, Mayor. There is a meeting for the Community Outreach Committee at six-thirty on November thirtieth to discuss the development of a neighbor-to-neighbor mediation program.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Purdy. Economic Development, Mr. Rock.
Yes, Mayor, as our Economic Development Director, Ms. Drucker, requested, we will have a meeting. So I will ask our clerk to poll our committee members for for a meeting, and it looks like we have a holiday coming up next week, so probably the first week in December or second week in December, so I'll give you some dates, Kelly, so we can do that.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, Mr. Rock. Finance, Mrs. Weiss.
There is a Finance Committee meeting on December 2nd to start the budget discussions.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. Recreation, Mr. Erdel.
No report, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Erdel. Safety, Mrs. Berry.
The Citizens Advisory Committee is meeting on Wednesday.
Yes, at six PM. Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Berry. Service and Utilities, Mr. Gould.
Thank you, Mayor. No report.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Gould. And then finally, Committee of the Hall, Mrs. Weiss.
No report, Mayor.
Very good. Well, we have now exhausted our regular meeting agenda. Our next regular meeting is scheduled for December seven, twenty twenty. As I mentioned in the mayor's report, we'll have to figure out if that, if we will be legally permitted to conduct that via Zoom, or if we'll have to actually meet in person. We will make that determination sometime between now and then and advise everyone accordingly. Till then, in spite of everything, I hope everybody has a happy Thanksgiving, and I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you.
I'll second.
You have a second by Mr. Mrs. Thomas, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Blankfeld?
Hi.
Mrs. Berry?
Hi.
Mrs. Purdy?
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss?
Hi.
Mr. Erdel?
Hi.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mr. Gould?
Hi.
Okay, very good. We are adjourned.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Stay well.
Yeah.
You too.
Bye, all.
Bye.